Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. This is the city council meeting for the City of Hudson for Monday, July 9th, 2012. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, the role, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District one more set.
Here.
District two, Yaku.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Tiwinko.
Here.
District five, Hoggett is excused. District six, Banslow.
Here.
Okay, in this portion of our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present who would like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda. So I know we have a couple people here that would like to address, so who's ever ready, come on up and you can be first. Okay, Samantha?
Samantha.
Yep, right up there, if you could name, give us your name and address and what you want to talk about.
My name's Samantha Otten, and I live at 728 Sixth Street. Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting me make a quick announcement. As I said, my name's Samantha Otten. I'm the Marshfield Clinic AmeriCorps member, serving with Youth Action Hudson this year. And as part of our environmental programming, we annually host a river cleanup in and around Lakefront Park to make our students, as well as the community, more aware of how great of an asset the St. Croix River is to the Hudson community. This year, our cleanup will take place during River Awareness Week, which is next week. Our cleanup will be Tuesday, July 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And so I'd like to take this opportunity to extend an invitation to the entire community to help us come out and pick up trash. If you're interested in volunteering with this event, you just need to show up at the band shell next Tuesday at 1:00. We suggest that everyone wear closed-toe shoes and bring work gloves. Trash bags are being provided for us by the St. Croix River Association, and Family Fresh has graciously donated a few snacks. Any questions that you have can be directed towards me at Youth Action Hudson. Thank you.
And I have her number if anybody wants to go, and we should probably see how many of us can go that day. All right, thank you. Marlis?
My name is Marlis Anderson. I live at 901 Dominion Drive in Hudson. And thank you very much for the time to be able to come before you. I feel I needed to come, is this on?
Yes.
Okay. And explain what happened to me and also to a friend of mine due to the lack of repairs that have been made to the tree areas on our main street on Second Avenue. On April 1st, I was walking from Urban Olive and Vine Restaurant about 12:30, walking north to the crosswalk when I accidentally fell, where the sidewalk meets the bark around the tree in front of the drugstore. This has become an open and obvious hazard, according to your senior claims adjuster for the city with the EMC insurance companies. I broke my nose and glasses, plus sprained my ankles, which is still giving me some discomfort. I'm very concerned about my spine, as I just had my third lumbar fusion just last May. Since I am an 80-year-old senior, I am concerned that it might give me some problem in the future. My brother-in-law, Jerry, who took me to the ER, is going to pass out some pictures so you could see what I looked like after this little accident of mine. The lack of maintenance for these tree bark areas is uncalled for. I can only assume that because the city has an immunity to compensate for these issues, that the city public officials or working department may be a little slack in maintaining the bark around these trees. There was about an inch and a half gap between the bark and the sidewalk, and I am actually very, very cautious as to where I was walking, but accidents do happen. Two years ago, a good friend of mine also fell and tore her meniscus in the same situation just north of Mickelson's Drugstore. One year later, she needed to have her niece replaced and is still having problems with that particular fall. I tend to want to question how many others have reported falling under the same circumstances. Bonnie, my friend, would have been here tonight, but her husband is just going into hospice. So I feel it is time that the City Hudson gets the situation corrected on all the sidewalk tree areas. There are other tree areas that have been corrected, and the grates have been placed there instead of the bark. Bark that does settle and cause these hazardous situations. Thus, I feel that this situation should be permanently resolved, so no one else will have to sustain what I've gone through. I'm disappointed to think that my insurance company and Medicare should have to pay for what I consider a city neglection. I do not feel it is my insurance company to pay for the injuries due to the lack of maintenance on these open and obvious hazards that occur every time the bark settles. On April 1st, this happened, this is 100 days ago, and I still am black and blue around my nose and also partially on my chin. And as I said, you can see by the pictures, I've had quite an experience. Do I have any questions?
We can't ask you any questions. We, just a comment. Anything else, Marlis?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, consent agenda items.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of June 25th, 2012. To approve the proposed plat of Heritage Greens Tribute Avenue Townhomes, with the requirement that a letter of credit or other satisfactory form of surety in the amount of $7,500 is provided prior to execution and filing the plat. To schedule a public hearing for 6:55 p.m. on Monday, August 6th, 2012, to consider rezoning the 20-plus acre site east of Carmichael Road and south of Stage Line Road from R2, one-family residential district to B2 general business district. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $329,581.50. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of 11 regular operators licenses for the period July 10th, 2012 to June 30th, 2014. And to approve the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used August 16th, 2012, at the Seriously Fun Art Auction at the FIP Center for the Arts. Additional operator license application information is available on request at the clerk's office. To place on file the semi-annual report of the compliance officer and the community access board minutes of June 26th, 2012, and the St. Croix EMS Commission minutes of June 28th, 2012, and July 3rd, 2012. That is all.
Just one question, Nancy. Did you say August 6th or August 5th?
August 6th. There's a typo on the agenda.
Okay, it is the 6th, which is a Monday.
It is the 6th, right.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Tiwinko?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Banslow?
Yes.
Okay, if it so fit the council, I'd like to change the agenda a little bit, take item three first. It's the final development plans for a 6,344 square-foot office building at 2331 Jack Road Drive, Lot 5, in the St. Croix Business Park East, Procentive, the Hampton Group LLC. Mr. Darnold, is that okay with everyone? Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, thank you.
Procentive's an existing business located in the St. Croix Business Park. They're proposing to construct a 6,344 square-foot office facility in Lot 5 of the St. Croix Business Park East. That's the new section of the business park located east of State Trunk Highway 35 and north of Tower Road. This would be the first development within that section of the business park. Procentive is administrator of the assist behavioral facilities in administration to assist in making efficient workplace for facilities that help behavioral disabilities and so forth. Plank Commission recommends approval of the final development plans as proposed by Procentive, the Hampton Group LLC, with the condition that the plans be amended in City Engineers' comments of June 25th, 2012. We did receive revised plans. There's just one real minor issue on grade change that needs to be made yet. And the fire department comments of June 7th and 21st, that one was primarily increasing the width of the fire lane from 10 feet to 20 feet. So Plank Commission recommends approval with those conditions.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion, questions?
Mr. Dave Lundee, the contractors here today, got any specific questions with Mr. Lundee?
Be nice to get our first project started over on the other side of the road. Still waiting if there's any questions. If there's none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Denny. If you can stay right there, we'll go to the petition, next item, number one, petition for annexation of 20 acres east of Carmichael Road and south of Stage Line, 423-429, Stage Line Road, Hudson Hospital, ordinance 8-12.
Next two items, the ordinance 812, the annexation of the 20 acres property owned by Hudson Hospital Incorporated, and the final development plans for the 41,000 square-foot medical office building are closely associated. In regards to the ordinance 812, the annexation agreement has been forward. Their attorneys has that under review, so they've not formally agreed to the annexation agreement at this time. What Catherine and I would like to recommend is first reading of ordinance 812. We bring it back in two weeks for consideration. It should give ample opportunity for the hospital to look at. Basically, there's two issues that really could potentially be discussed. One is the deferred assessments for the Carmichael Road interchange. That's a 20-year-old project, which we're required contractually to collect those fees. And second is the Stage Line Road deferred assessments, again, we're contractually obligated to collect and then repay the developer, developers, I should say, who paid the deferred assessments upfront. Everything else is basically set by ordinance considerations.
I'll move for first reading of ordinance 8-12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Need a roll call on that? Or just a regular? No?
Just regular.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item, the, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
Go to the second item, which is item 682, under the Plank Commission, final development plans, 41,000 square-foot medical office building, 405 Stage Line Road, Health Partners. This development would be constructed immediately east and a little bit north of the current Hudson Hospital and Clinic's facility. The project will entail the construction of a 41,000 square-foot medical office building, additional off-street parking, new entrance, which would be located 450 feet north and east on Stage Line Road of the existing facility, our existing access to the site, and then also a stormwater pond. All the stormwater management will be on-site with rate control flow going to the I-94 system. Their architectural firm, Perkins Will, is here tonight. They can give you a brief overview of the project. What I'm seeking tonight is to get a conditional approval of the final development plans. There was a misunderstanding. They thought this review was going to be next Monday, so I gave them an option where to come tonight to discuss it or come on the 23rd. They wanted to discuss it tonight, so if there's any issues the common council may have, then we could discuss those tonight. So I'd like to turn the floor over to Paul Newhouse from Perkins Will, the project architect, to talk about the project, then we can have any discussions that may be necessary.
Thank you, Denny.
I'm going to turn on my computer here. Hi, I'm Paul Newhouse from Perkins and Will in Minneapolis, and we're working with Hudson Hospital and Health Partners to design the medical office building. And so we have a few things to show you here, just to familiarize you with the project. The drawing on the left on the screen shows the hospital as it is today, with the parking lot to the north of the hospital shown dashed to represent, I hope this isn't on a timer. I guess I'm on a timer.
Podcast.
Yeah. Moving. Let me see here, I'm going to get back up there. I'm just going to leave it this way, instead of full screen. In any case, back to where I was, the area on the left shows the parking lot as it is today, and the dashed areas represent the part of the parking lot that's going to be changed from the development. The right side shows the, in color, shows the development as designed for the submittal, and you can see that there is new parking being added, a new entry as was described earlier, up to the north, and the existing entry is going to be closed eventually. There'll be a short overlap where we're using, where we're developing the first new entry, and the existing one will remain. The new building is just to the north of the hospital, shown right here in white, and like you said, it's 41,000 square feet. It's a two-story building, so there'll be 21,000 on the first floor and 20,000 on the second floor. All, since the medical office building will require more parking, and we're showing it up here to the north, not all of the parking is going to fit once the backfill in the existing hospital is completed. So we are also showing an area down at the bottom there, circled in red, that will be used for overflow. Here are, here's a picture, whoops, boy. Here's a picture of the medical office building as viewed from the existing canopy of the hospital, just before you pass under, and it shows, as you can see here, a small connector that's glazed with a courtyard beyond, and then the medical office building. And the materials that are being used for the medical office building are very similar to what's being used on the hospital. It's a combination of metal panels and split-faced block, and a lot of the similar colors that are being used on the hospital. The entry is adjacent to the existing canopy, faces out into this circle that goes around the existing canopy, and then the medical office building will have its own drive-up and its own canopy. To allow people to get out of their cars and for passengers to get out and remain under shelter and then go into the building. Here's a view from the northwest, showing another view. And here again, I'll point out some of the materials. We've got metal panels on the front, there's split-faced block on the north end here a little bit and going around to the back. It's very similar to what's being, what's on the hospital today. Here's a view that we did, generated from the computer, showing the existing hospital off to the right in red with a gray roof and some yellow there. And then we're showing the new addition and its relationship to the hospital. So you can see the existing canopy. You can see we're adding our front entry right here, pretty close, with our new canopy, and then some of the existing parking that we're expanding on, and new parking to the north. Also point out the retention ponds further to the north, which are between the new parking and Stage Line Road. Just a quick view of the floor plans. There'll be tenants in the building. Some of the tenants will be associated with the hospital, and others will be outside groups. There's level two, and then this is a civil drawing, just showing the utilities and how they connect up with the city. And that's the project. Are there any questions?
Is there any need, is there any need to expand Stage Line Road at that, in new entrance?
That's why the issue we need to dissolve. There's two issues that are not totally resolved. One is the final design for Stage Line Road. Minimally, a turn lane for eastbound traffic will be necessary. We want to explore, making sure that that intersection is as safe as possible. So we do want it to split, city engineer and the project engineer to meet, go over the design of that. The second issue from a utility standpoint is the line of the sanitary sewer that comes, the city engineer recommended it coming west and a little bit north and west back to Stage Line Road. They're okay with that or the proposed alignment. We want to discuss that issue also. That's a relatively minor issue. The Stage Line Road improvement is more, we want to get, we want to discuss those issues with their engineer quickly, bring back a recommendation. I just want, would like to achieve a conditional approval, so we can move this project ahead as quickly as possible. But again, this project's going to be contingent on the annexation and the rezoning also. So it's August 2nd is when the rezoning's going to be scheduled, or August 6th, excuse me, is when the rezoning's going to be scheduled. But I would like to try to get a conditional approval. Staff has finalized the plan. We just need to work out the Stage Line Road improvements and work those out, so we can keep this project moving as quickly as possible.
Couple questions. Most of the cars that'll be coming out of there will go straight west, right?
Yeah, most, and that's the issue we really want to address, is make sure that left turn exiting the site is as safe as possible.
Because that, there's a little bit of a, I don't call it a blind intersection. If you move that entrance to the east, I would think, and that's a 35, is it 35 mile an hour speed limit there?
35 mile an hour, correct.
You know, we talked a little bit of planning about a separate turn lane to go on to that. I mean, I don't know if that's being considered.
Those are things we want to explore.
Okay.
Are we still going to, along with that, explore sidewalk possibility?
We'll address those issues also.
Any other questions you have? Looks like a great project for us.
I'll move for approval then on staff and committee recommendation based on contingent, or making a contingent on the annexation of the property of the City Hudson and the rezoning of property B2 to general business district.
I'll second that.
Just for, I'd like it to come back as far as the interchange, though. I'd like to see that.
Yes.
Sorry, Ted, that design would be brought back to your public board or the council for review and approval.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is review bids and consider accepting proposal for 2012 guardrail project. Lori, you want to talk about what we did in finance? You can find it.
Sure.
I got it here.
Well, we approved awarding the bid to Madison Contractors in the amount of $23,699.50. Just with the provision that we may exclude the bridge/Second Street guardrail project for this year. We might combine that with road construction at some point in the future, and there were concerns brought up by homeowners up in that area, just regarding a new guardrail and what it would do as far as their view and property values. So that's one segment of the project I think we would probably put off at this time, but otherwise, we're accepting the bid, or would like to accept the bid from Madison Contractors.
Okay, questions, comments?
So instead of $23,699, we're going to drop five grand about?
Approximately, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve? Is that a motion?
So, that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have an application from Richard Erdman for a taxicab driver's license. No problems or questions. It was approved at finance. Is there any, is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion that anyone has or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is application of the Visual Arts Council for a temporary Class B retailer's license to sell wine on August 16th, 2012, at the Seriously Fun Art Auction Gala at the FIP Center for the Arts at 109 Locust Street. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there someone here that would like to talk about it on TV, Lana, to promote it?
Hi, I'm Lana Schubert, and I'm on Visual Arts Council at the FIP Center for the Arts, and I'm here with Chelsea Kelly as well. And we are having another gala event at the FIPs, August 16th. We are having our Seriously Fun Art Auction Gala, and we have 70 artists donating works of art that will be on silent auction from July 27th, and then with the final bids coming in on that evening, beginning at 7:00 o'clock. You can call the FIPs to get your tickets for the event. And I'm hoping that everyone will come. We will be having food by local restaurants, and hopefully serving wine at that as well. And it's a really fun event. We have live music as well, so I'm hoping everyone can come.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we don't have planning commission that night, so.
There you go.
We have a, motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Update on projects. Mr. Posler.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. You have the update in front of you, but just briefly, the projects that are active are the maintenance, the street maintenance improvements, which is the cracked ceiling and flex patching, and the contracts haven't sent to the contractor. We anticipate construction, the work hopefully starting in a week or two. The street improvements, which is the reconstruction, the mill and overlay. The bid date has been set for August 2nd, so the intent is to bring that to the council on the August 6th meeting with bids for approval. And so we're finishing up the plans and specs and permits for that, and working with staff on preliminary assessments for the work on Grandview and the alley. Private developments, work continues on Uline. That's probably obvious, and we're providing some inspection for that. And Mississippi Flats, the contractor has notified us he's finished the work, so we'll go back out and re-inspect that this week for verification. And that's it for projects, so if anyone had any other questions,
Is this a new CEO look?
Yeah. That's the remnants of a two-week trip to Skout, Philmont Scout Ranch in New Mexico. So yes, I would also like to thank the council for the last year and a half as I take on a new role, and I think you've received a letter as far as Karen Erickson filling in, and I'd still be under contract to assist with, with FOLD, not with the city.
Well, we'd like to thank you for all your work that you've done with the city, first time around and the second time around.
Oh, thanks.
And for the fine work that you've done and your company has done for the City Hudson.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah, thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider designating parking spots for emergency responders at Public Safety Billion, Building, Williams Parking Lot. Mary?
Okay, Chief Ry came to Public Safety requesting four additional parking spots, the ones just north of the striped spot, just south, oh, we say north, just south of the striped parking area. My kids read my notes, so I'm winging this one. And basically, the situation is that during peak hours are 3:00 to 10:00 p.m., and with the high traffic, you know, the high, the increased parking in the evening, they're having difficulty finding places to park during an emergency. So Public Safety gave unanimous support on this issue, and we talked today about restriping that area to actually make parking spots instead of the, and we thought we'd get less parking spots out of that if we did that. We talked about the possibility of moving the four spots against a wall, if that's what the council would prefer. Basically, what Jim is requesting is that we have four additional spots designated somewhere convenient to the Public Safety Building, so.
How many spots do you need, Jim?
Well, four more would help. The dumpsters that are there take up two.
The dumpsters that are there take up two, now the dive truck and trailer there is there, that's three more spots that that's taken up.
No, but on an average call, how many responders do you have?
We have twenty, on average, is about twenty to twenty-two responders, but then if you add in a rescue call, then we have additional EMS personnel and showing up two, all looking scrambling for a parking spot at the same time.
Would it help to go further up on, I'm a little concerned about giving up four more parking spots for the, for the public, for the merchants. I, you know, if you look at Second Street, you have probably room for five or six cars there.
Six.
That's designated for you guys, or emergency medical.
Second Street?
Second Street.
Third Street, excuse me. On the hill here, right up, right next to the building.
Yeah, that's EMS.
Can I say that, that in and of itself sometimes is an issue with traffic turning onto third and.
There's five spots behind the building here for EMS also, that we've reserved already, and you're telling me you can't get twenty cars in the spot on the east side of the building there?
That's right. It gets really congested, and I've asked our people to consolidate space the best they can to make the best use of the space that's there.
So for the number of calls that you have, and usually they're between, we're going to keep those spots open all the time? Is that what you're looking for? Not just between three and ten, but we're going to have those reserved?
Well, that's what I would prefer, but.
I said, I talked to Jim about doing it just between three and ten, you know, maybe assigning it parking for fire, you know, safety, or public safety between three and ten. The concern is that enforcement, if there's, if there's people parked there and it's not enforced, it's going to be useless. I mean, there could be enforcement problems either way if someone doesn't want to listen to the signage, I understand that.
The best enforcement we could ask for is from three to five when we have enforcement out. You're, I mean, you're absolutely right, it's not going to be enforced otherwise.
So how many spots do we have right now that are currently designated and reserved for emergency?
For EMS and fire? We figured three along Third Street, there's two behind the Public Safety Building, but the suburban sits in one of them.
Suburban sits in long time, yeah.
There's, there's five back here.
Five back here.
But, and Kim's not here, where, is she here?
Yep.
I asked her to come because I wanted to make sure she could defend her own grounds, so.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but those spots, if I understand, are used for, are not really used during an emergency situation, or are they?
They're used pretty much all day. For our staff that's here all day, for the staff that stays during the weekend, we have anywhere up to five people. If all people from our, out of town, then they're all parking back there, that's five, so we still have at least one more person that's parking either on the hill or trying to park it back, just to stay out of the way, because a lot of people don't prefer to park on the hill, just for the simple fact that they don't want their car hit.
So during an emergency situation, those are filled?
Those are filled.
So those are basically knocked out during an emergency situation, and we obviously can't fit twenty cars in the striped area. We tried figuring out, taking our best guess, guess, I asked Jim for a best guess there, and I don't know what you, if you went out and looked, I drove, I went over there to look today, I, I saw six cars there out there, I just couldn't figure out.
You don't think we can get twenty cars there? I've seen more than twenty cars there.
They'd have to make a conscious effort to park.
Yeah, they, they generally park heel to toe in there.
Right now, right now, they're zipping, and they're getting out and running up to the fire station.
Then they, then they leave in a space because the refuse containers are sitting there and they don't want their car banged, so they do leave a pretty generous space in front of the refuse container.
Well, if they're coming in at three o'clock, and there's an emergency, they can't get the garbage picked up. I mean, that's, I don't think.
No, I know that, but it's, it's them hauling the garbage to the refuse container.
Okay. But those have been there for, what, five years?
Right.
And have you increased your staff more?
We haven't increased our staff, but our attendance has increased.
Right, because we've been hiring, focusing more on people who actually are available.
Right, trying to get them.
Yeah, that was part of the criteria we started looking at in Police and Fire Commission when I was on. I mean, I mean, I don't know if, if four spots is too much, I mean, if Jim would, I think if Jim would consider less, we can consider that, but I, I think there are spots that are needed and it's, you know, when you're in an emergency situation, I just don't want our firefighters searching for a spot.
I think they provide a valuable service to the city, and we should give them consideration over businesses.
Right.
If they're the priority, it should be for the people who are protecting the city.
Well, in that sense, and I understand, we just, one meeting ago, agreed to the refuse container contract, but if we're so desperate for spaces and willing to give up business rights, I don't think we should be housing dumpsters. If that's two spots in them, sounds like they're two very needed spots.
Well, those dumpsters have been there since two thousand seven, or in fact, they were bigger before. I think we had one more, they got rid of one, I think.
Yeah, we got rid of some, and I would challenge someone to find a new place for the dumpsters, because they can't go in the front parking, they can't go on the sidewalk in front, they can't go back in the patio, it's a health hazard. Someone wants to find a new place for the dumpsters, I'm sure that.
But I mean, if we're talking.
Pete would be happy with that, too.
If we're talking the need for spots, is it the city's responsibility to provide dumpster space?
Nope, it's not.
Or provide rescue spots?
I agree with you a hundred percent. The problem is that the city, I think, and we, I wasn't on council then, but when that patio was approved, they put themselves in a pickle, and that wasn't thought about. And you got to put a, you need a dumpster. I mean, can, you know, I don't, if someone, I think, again, like I said, I'm sure that Jim wouldn't mind taking those two spots back if we could find a better location for the dumpster. We tried going up on the hill, it's not, can't, it's not safe, can't safely place it there, so.
I don't think the dumpsters are our priority.
No.
For, for any reason, and safety should trump any business anticipation, so I'd have to support it unless there's a viable different situat, solution out there. I don't see, you guys got to park a little tighter. I mean, but, and that.
Is two more really going to alleviate anything else?
Well, everything helps. I get people circling the lot looking for a place to park.
Yeah, which is why if it, if we think that, if we think that people will tend to not park on the top of the lot because they don't want to walk as far, and we want to leave closer spots for the merchants, then we, we can put the four spots on top by the, by the retaining wall. I mean, the point is that there's more spots for safety, and if, if it's a wiser decision to move the spots farther from the merchants, to leave closer spots from the merchants, fine. I, I don't think that would be a problem. It's an extra few steps.
That, that could work for us to.
But because, yeah, I mean.
Use along the retaining wall.
It's five more steps versus driving around looking for, I mean, it takes sixteen minutes to get up to the hill when you find a spot. I don't want it to take twenty, if it's my house. That's all I'm saying.
I guess I'd be more in favor of just south of the building against the retaining wall.
Against the retaining wall.
Than the four most.
Sure.
Visible.
So we're going to, we're going to add steps to the emergency response, people getting to an emergency situation as opposed to a shopper coming for dinner or going to one of the shops on Second Street?
I'm not saying that, I'm just trying to find a compromise if it's not.
But I mean, there's a back entrance also to the fire hall, right?
Yes.
So whether they're coming from down below the building to the west or from the southeast.
Well, those four spots are right next to the, you just kind of zip right in. I'm just saying, if it's going to take five more steps versus not having the spots at all and having them circle, I'd take the five more steps. If everyone agrees to the spots to the, just to the south, I'm sure we'd be more happy with that, so.
You're talking adjacent to the two EMS spots, correct?
Yeah.
Would that work, Jim, there?
That can work.
I mean, it'd be right next to their other two EMS spots, it wouldn't be.
And are we going to restrict it to the three to ten P.M.?
I just don't know if that would get enforced.
All the time would be good.
No offense, Marty, but I don't know if that would get enforced.
I don't know, from an enforcement standpoint, how would that work if it was posted emergency responders from three to ten P.M. reserved?
Well, we, we wouldn't know who they were unless we, they had some type of vehicle or.
And are you going to tell them if they're in there after three o'clock because they can say, oh, well, I got a ticket, I'm going to stay here another.
You have any problem with EMS parking spots? I mean, with people parking there that shouldn't park there? You do?
No, no, well, the fire guys use it quite often.
Well, not only that, but you'll find that even our EMS spots that are in the back that were designated for us, we had two, two spots that were back there, when our ambulance wasn't parked there and they were filled, and there's nothing we can do about it at that point. I mean, it didn't happen all the time, but it happened, and then we didn't have places to park, and that's where our actual quarters were out of the, the Public Safety Building over there.
Okay. What's your preference, folks?
I would prefer to keep it as is, but I don't, I have support for that, but.
I'll give you support for that.
Well, then I'll make a motion to approve as recommended.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Can we try it for a couple of months, or see how it works?
And then revisit it?
Sure.
And revisit it.
Great, what now?
The four spots.
The four spots.
Yeah. All day, I don't care, or all the time.
What, three months? What's the magic number there?
I don't have one.
What month are we in? July? We visited around.
Two months.
Hopefully, we won't have any fires.
We don't have to, I mean, I'm just suggesting, maybe we should revisit the issue a couple of months.
Revisit the location or the issue in general?
The issue in general, that it resolves the problem if there is one.
Let's look at it at the end of September.
Is that okay with the motion person and the second? Look at it again in September, see if there's been any change or?
Sure, why not? End of September.
We either won't have a problem, or we will have a problem.
Yeah, because it gets through the busy summer season, I guess we'll see then if that's.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
At this point, we'd like to go into closed session pursuant to Chapter nineteen point eight five, one C, Wisconsin statute to consider compensation for police officer and lieutenant's position.
Do you want to do the rest of the stuff and then?
We can do that. No, there's nothing left on there.
Communications.
We can do that afterwards. All right. Roll call?
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Yaku?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
T-Winkle?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Signs are, yeah, please.